I call to order the meeting of the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District Board of Education. Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll?
Ms. Wright.
Here.
Mr. Posh.
Here.
Mr. Heinz.
Here.
Ms. Sereni.
Here.
Ms. Lewis.
Here.
All right. Thank you, everyone. So, our opening item is awards and recognitions. Do we have any tonight, Ms. Kirby?
I have some, but I'm going to wait until October to do them because I would like to invite our recognizees to our October meeting for that.
Okay.
I will delay that.
Great. So, the next item is statements from the audience. Do we have any? No statements from the audience. Did anyone come meaning to speak and didn't sign up? Okay. Moving on to our consent agenda. So, we have a couple of items tonight under meeting minutes. Personnel and finance on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to consider the consent agenda?
I motion that we consider the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion?
You know, other than, I'm always impressed by the variety of programs that our schools and staff put in front of our students and, you know, and things like, you know, the soccer coaches and just that sort of thing. It's nice to see the work that folks are doing in our buildings.
Lot of activities for our students.
Mm-hmm.
Excellent. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll?
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Sereni.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Wright.
Yes.
And Capitol Conference was part of the consent agenda, so that is done.
Yes.
So, now we are on to the superintendent's report. Liz.
All right. Thank you. So, a couple of things I'd like to report and make sure the board is informed of. One is we do have the Heights Family Academy that is happening on Saturday, September 14th at Heights High. I believe it starts at 9:00 a.m. and runs till about 2:00. And so, if you're able to make that, please come. You'll be able to see parents and community members getting information about the different programs, opportunities, and supports available for students and families in Cleveland Heights University Heights. Second, as a follow-up to an issue that was discussed in our August meeting, we are planning for LGBTQ supports for students in the middle schools. So, we will be starting a club. We're working with social workers to get that club off the ground to make sure that all of our students have supports there. We held our middle school curriculum nights last Thursday and held our high school curriculum night last Wednesday. Both events were very energetic, very well attended. Lots of excitement and enthusiasm for the middle schools in terms of the renovated buildings and really great information that parents receive for the high school curriculum nights. We do have an elementary school open house. Our elementary school open house is happening this Thursday, September 5th, at 6:30. And so, parents will be able to see the experiences and get information about the education that the students are having this year. They'll be able to meet the teachers, meet the administrators, and see the many wonderful programs that are planned to support their students this year. I have four additional meeting greets that will be held for members of the community, parents, students, to come to meet me and hear about the work that I've been doing and the vision for the work will be continued to leave here in the district. So, I do have one on September 4th.
That's tomorrow.
Which is tomorrow at Heights High. That's 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. And then, next week, there is one at Phoenix Coffee House, September 12th, 7:30 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. And then, finally, at the Community Center, September 18th, will be the last meeting greet from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. That's being held. Then, the last thing I wanted to report, last year, the district did get a big grant for metal detectors. We will start using those at the football and the basketball games this year, those particular sports, because those get the largest crowds for the high school sports. And so, as we, you know, learn about how that goes, we're also looking to expanding that to additional sports as well. So, that starts, the first home football game is Friday, Friday evening. And so, just wanted to make sure the board was informed. This is a follow-up to the work that started last year as relates to this.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting us know.
Have we received any feedback on the metal detectors at all yet?
Well, they haven't been used yet.
This is the first time.
Well, okay.
But we'll be collecting it and monitoring that, you know, to see what kind of feedback we get on that.
And thank you for following through on the middle school extension of the LGBTQ welcoming and community building and culture building. I think that is critically important work that we need to do more of.
Has anyone reached out to the original parent who requested?
Yes, I have.
Okay. All right. So, she knows that we're moving forward. Great. Thank you. Any other comments, questions regarding the superintendent's report?
Well, we wanted to divide and conquer for elementary open houses.
We're going to do that in my president's report.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. So, now we'll move on to the treasurer's report. Mr. Gaynor?
Yeah. So, two quick things. One, we do have the lay finance committee meeting tomorrow at 6 o'clock. That's here at the Board of Education. And the second item we have is four-year action, the five-year forecast. The five-year forecast that you see here is, you'll remember last month, we brought two different scenarios to you and didn't actually have you approve a five-year forecast. One where we had the student wellness dollars included and one where we did not. So, this five-year forecast has the student wellness dollars there. We've since come to find out that you can supplant, that you can use those dollars to support student wellness and health initiatives that are currently going on in the district. So, that line item is there offsetting currently the $2.1 million that we're losing in additional high school ed choice vouchers. So, it's not a one-for-one. You'll see the, that allocation of $792,000 in fiscal '20 and $1.1 million in fiscal '21. And it's assumed to be that level moving forward. So, this is the same as the one scenario that you saw previously. I did highlight a couple of things in the assumptions. The biggest one being that we still do not know at this point about the cap and whether we will remain on the cap or whether we won't.
Any idea when we'll know?
Well, the state is supposed to find out by the end of this month. So, the area coordinator at ODEs told us that they'll receive their guidance by the end of the month and then they'll inform us. So, we could see some fluctuation based on that. We should know. And if I hear anything, obviously, in advance of that, I'll be certain to let you know that. But that's the biggest substantive change that could affect the forecast currently. And then, I also, you know, noted the $2.1 in vouchers, additional vouchers in the assumptions as well. So...
So, I mean, we, okay, so the five-year forecast assumes the worst-case scenario, which is we stay on the cap.
Correct.
And I think that's, you know, until we're told otherwise, that's the rule of the day. I mean, it would be nice to know if they take us off the cap. It'd be nice if they were able to help us give some kind of prediction of what our revenue stream would be. I mean, the fact that they've sort of pulled it away. I mean, isn't it, okay, so in May of every year, we've got to submit a five-year forecast to the state. Is it May?
In November and in May both.
Okay. So, in May, we've got to submit a, just to show that we're fiscally...
Correct. At least showing that we're kind of trying to monitor the situation.
Right. Yeah. Then, they take away funding from us.
Yes.
I mean, literally days before school year starts. And now, we don't even know if we're on this, if we stay on the cap or we're off the cap. I mean, that just doesn't seem very fair to me.
Yes. Doesn't make a lot of sense.
I agree. Just for the sake of, for the sake of, you know, the necessary rant, it is absurd. We are forced by state law to twice a year adopt a five-year forecast that shows the state auditor that we are financially solvent. And yet, the state itself doesn't live up to the same obligation to us, you know, with the ability to change in their biennial budget, any line item, and throwing the, just wicked, for lack of a better term, curveball at us of, you know, over $2 million additional deduction of funds that we had counted on for our public school children, the education of our public school children. And it is now, again, being diverted to private, mostly religious schools. It is hypocrisy at its most foul.
Yeah. And schools that don't have any of the same accountability thresholds that we have.
Correct.
And they don't even have ed choice. So, if they're performing badly, no one's going to take money away from them.
Absolutely.
And the whole point is to funnel money in their direction.
Conveniently, they're not subject to the same financial accountability that we are.
And are other surrounding districts also faced with this, Scott?
Yeah. Excuse me. There were several districts in the county that had similar situations where their high school went to ed choice status based on graduation rate. But statewide, there was a list that we received and we will be in the process of reaching out to those districts in terms of advocacy and trying to build some energy around seeing what we can do to change that situation or at least try to mitigate the loss that we're seeing.
Yeah. Dan, to your point, we're supposed to show our fiscal solvency, except with the new numbers, we're, you know, half a million dollars in the hole next year. So, we can't actually do the things that we need to do, like planning for the future.
Makes it difficult.
Indeed.
And sadly, you know, even this board who wants to see the five-year forecast and approves a five-year forecast every month.
Right.
So, where, again, you know, the minimum is November and May. You do it every month. Still, you know, you find yourself in these circumstances.
Well, okay. So, let's look at the good news. This board, this school district, this staff, has got us to a point where we were able to stretch our last levy another year.
Correct.
You know, we know we need to be on the ballot in 2020.
Correct.
You know, that goes, that doesn't change anything. The lay finance committee meeting is happening tomorrow night, and Scott, you and I are attending. And I'd like to encourage anybody else to attend if it's a public meeting.
It's 6:00. Although, multiple meetings here, so we're a little tight space. But we're over in the conference room by business services.
So, there, so historically, the lay finance committee has looked at mill models and they've given some advice to the board as to what the mileage of a levy would be if it were to be in a certain timeframe. And I think we need to give, I mean, up until now, I mean, there's only two dates. It's a primary date in March and/or it's the general election in November. I mean, just knowing school finance, it almost has to be in March. I mean, I think that has to be something we're looking closely at. Do I have everybody's agreement that this is what we tell the lay finance committee? And do we ask them to give us a mileage recommendation?
I think we have to.
Yes.
And I'm concerned that if we don't go in March, knowing that we are in the hole next year, we would have to make cuts before we would even attempt to pass a levy. And that concerns me greatly.
We'd have to make the cuts before November.
You know, and we've made enormous progress in the past few years. One thing that I was going to mention under new business, and now's a perfectly good time to do it, actually better, is we've recently received word that we have 36 AP scholars. And I would like to see us recognize, invite those students to come. Maybe that's who you were considering already, Liz. But, you know, those students need to be recognized in public, and I would love to see them here. And, you know, it is those programs that are so very expensive and all of the reverse engineering that goes in building opportunities for our students to achieve at that level later in their education. It starts in elementary school. It starts with small classes. It starts with all of the, you know, lessons that are exciting and engaging and the middle school honors classes that build these students into achieving more of their potential when they get to high school and then really go out and show us to be the community that we are when they're achieving as adults. So, we have made, we have done incredibly good work, not us, everyone who has sat at these tables, everyone who is sitting at desks in our classrooms. We need to do what we can to continue the arc of the pendulum. And so, yes, I think we do need to ask the lay finance committee to advise us on the next step to continue this wonderful progress.
We have 20 AP classes. How many public schools run or have 20?
Not many.
Including the new computer science faculty class.
Are there any school, public schools?
This is a measurement that matters.
Yeah. We, I would love to know that data point.
Yes. Yes.
Did you see the separate insert in Sunday's New York Times on private schools in Cleveland? There's a, I put it on my desk to bring tonight, and of course, I forgot it. So, you know, the big marketing machine for why you should send your kids to private schools. And, you know, this massive chart. And it lists, like, how many AP offerings they have, and none of them have hit ours, just in case you were wondering.
Bring that next time.
Yeah.
I'm going to bring it before next time. Like I said, I meant to grab it.
Make a picture, take a picture and send it to us.
Well, it's a whole, you know, 20 or 30-page insert. It's a little mini magazine.
Okay.
I was going to bring it to Kathan, actually. Because that's what we're working against in terms of our marketing, right?
Yeah.
Yep. Yep. So, thank you, Scott, for updating the five-year forecast. Thank you for getting clarity around the wellness, student wellness dollars and what, you know, how those had to be used. So, do I have a motion to consider the five-year forecast?
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll?
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Sereni.
Yes. All right. On to the board president's report. Molly, you jumped the gun here a little bit.
Sorry.
Yes. We need to figure out who is going to go to which elementary school open house. And I would like us to not go to one that we typically go to. So, I will not go to Garrity. Plus, I'm going there next Friday for their ice cream social. But who would like to go where? Assuming you are available.
It's this Thursday, the 5th, 6:30 to 8.
6:30 to 8.
I'll go to Noble.
I can go to Fairfax. I rarely go there.
I was just at Canterbury last week for the ice cream social, you know.
Anybody want to go to Oxford?
The word "ice cream" is in it. I'm there. So, I'd be happy to go to Oxford. That'd be great.
You guys are shaming me. I'm in California dropping a grollop out of Co-op, so I can't be in two places at once.
We'll make you do double duty next time, Tim.
The Homone Granger time charter to make it.
I have a parent event that I have to go to with the girls on Thursday.
For those of you who don't know, Beverly is hosting two AFS students, and I am very proud of that. So, two foreign exchange students, which is great.
Joe, remind me what night this is again?
Thursday this week, the 5th.
6:30 to 8.
Very good.
In fact, I might leave Fairfax and go to Roxelle, too, or something.
If you can hit two. It depends on, yeah.
So, we know right now we have Noble, Fairfax, and Oxford covered. Feel free to go to anywhere else if you want to.
If I can, I'll add Garrity to, not Garrity, Boulevard to my list if I, you know, it depends on what's going on in the building.
Yeah, exactly.
But I'll put Boulevard in as a second.
I'll try to get to all of them, but...
30-second appearances.
Yeah.
I just got a MapQuest at the right.
We did that the first day of school.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think she has a car like the Jetsons where she flies from place to place. Okay. Also, I wanted to let the board know. Scott told me we are registered for Capitol Conference.
Excellent. Thank you.
So, and our, we don't know our housing yet, but the lottery opens up.
Next week.
Next week. So, we will be put in for that.
We will have beds. Okay. Cool.
Yep. Yep. So, that is taken care of. I want to remind everyone about our middle school open houses coming up. So, I invite everyone in the community to come and see our renovated middle schools. Monticello is September 15th, and Roxelle is 22nd.
Rox Middle.
Rox Middle, yes. From 1 to 4. So, that's all I have tonight to cover on the president's report. Any board committee reports?
I attended the first PTA council meeting of the year, which was Friday. And we met our Ohio PTA district representative. We're part of District 11. And I've forgotten her name already. I have it written down, of course. But that was great, just to be able to meet her face-to-face. And she represents six school districts all around us. And when the time comes for political engagement, she's very anxious to coordinate other districts locally with us when we have common cause. Anything else? There's upcoming stuff. Reaching Heights is having their board meeting next week, Tuesday. And I have not heard from the Career Tech Ed advocacy group in a while. They were kind of taking the summer off, so...
So, I heard from Don Frederick. There is a, he's sort of the de facto head of the CT working group, I guess. And there is an event at WVIZ this Thursday where there's a kickoff of basically CT initiatives in the state of Ohio. You know, there's a general feeling that it's always been sort of the second-class citizen when it comes to high school education, and they're trying to break that mold and make sure they understand they are upfront and viable and probably more so than, you know, college-ready. CT-ready is almost as important or is important. So, the whole concept is there's a big marketing campaign, lots of research. So, that's happening at WVIZ on Thursday.
And it's also on TV, right?
It's on TV.
You can watch it on PBS at 8 o'clock on Thursday, this Thursday, the first chunk of it.
It's a documentary or...
Yeah. It's a documentary called "The Career Path Less Taken." And that way, you don't have to pay for parking to go downtown.
So, there is a YouTube link that Don sent me. I will share with all you folks.
That'd be great. Thank you. Any other board committee reports?
I was at the Roxborough cookout on last, I can't even remember what day it was, last Thursday.
Thursday.
Very nice turnout. They also had their curriculum night at the middle school that night, but lots of parents, nice turnout. I got a chance to meet PTA president over there and lots of parents. So, yeah, that was nice. Yeah.
I heard that was a good event.
Yeah.
Excellent. Any other board committee reports?
There's a Heights Schools Foundation Executive Meeting tomorrow. So, we'll be planning some programming and looking forward to the induction of our, beginning to plan who might be inducted for the Distinguished Alumina Hall of Fame and Homecoming Weekend, which is obviously right around the corner. So...
I'm assuming we're planning to march again?
Oh, yes. We didn't get those jerseys for nothing.
Yeah. That's right. Well, we'll have to fill out our form and make sure we have a spot in the parade. And we still have the banner.
Yes.
I'll get that from Kathan. I still have stickers and little temporary tattoos left over from the last parade, so we can do the whole shebang again.
Lovely.
All right. Any unfinished business?
I guess this is sort of unfinished because we spoke about the census a couple months back. Anybody who is interested in participating in the census, there are part-time, full-time jobs available in a whole variety of capacities. And anybody who wants to participate as an employee of the census would be, you know, helping us by getting more people counted for the public school funding, which would be good. So...
It's a great opportunity to get some seasonal work. I've known quite a few people over the years who have picked up those hours and been happy they did.
New business. Dan, I believe you had something you wanted to bring up?
I do. First, I have a piece of new, new business that's just worth, I think, giving a moment of time. We learned today that a garden that has been built in Cleveland Heights, it's a community garden that has been, that was created through the work of Steve Walker, who is a wonderful Cleveland Heights employee, and a friend of his, J. Rod Johnson. We're trying to embrace the Nepalese community. We have about 100 Nepalese refugees living in Cleveland Heights at this point. And so, as a way of making the area feel more at home to them, these two gentlemen created a summer camp that was designed to build a community garden for these fantastic new arrivals on our shores and in our community. And unfortunately, the worst among us showed their ugly heads. And shortly after the community gardens being featured on a news report, the garden was destroyed. So, the antithesis of who this community is traditionally. So, I just wanted to kind of pause a minute and reflect on that as, really just as a citizen with a microphone in front of me. But, you know, we are a community that has a long tradition of welcoming people, no matter what their background. We really think about what their future is. And so, I just wanted to celebrate what Mr. Walker and Johnson did this summer and including kids. And, you know, welcoming this wonderful community of people to live among us and for us to learn from and grow with these fantastic people. So, Thursday at 5:30, there is a community gathering to rebuild the Nepalese Community Garden, which is on Delmore. It doesn't have the address here, but I bet we could find it without too much trouble. And we will obviously be engaged elsewhere on that night, as we just discussed. But I just think that it's worth sharing that good news, unfortunate news, and hopefully, good news again with everyone. If anybody wants to comment, I'll pause. That being the case, hearing none, I will move on. We have a resolution.
Hold on a second.
Yes.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. I mean, I mean, we may have paused. I'm still sort of in...
Yeah. I'm just sitting here thinking about how awful it is. Yeah.
It's a lot to absorb. This is not the news we are used to hearing happen within our community.
Well, I know when Steve was sharing some of this in one of the meetings that we had at the high school, I mean, just incredible, interesting job. You know, I want to know more. I want to know what happened. I want to know, you know, are there our people? I mean, you know, how can this be stopped? Is there, I was kind of hoping that it was at one of our buildings, that we had cameras, but it's obviously not. So... but it's obviously not, so.
Yeah.
Just awful.
It is. So, thank you all, specifically Jody, for arranging for me to be able to present a resolution for consideration to the Board. As we all know, resolutions are full of whereases, and then, and then one therefore. So, in the interest of time, I'm not going to read all of the whereases, but there are five or six at the beginning that I think give the story. So, this is a resolution, if adopted, this is a resolution of the Board of Education of Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District. Whereas, in violation of the law and without appropriate input from Ohio citizens, Ohio House Bill seventy, a measure permitting the state takeover of local schools, was signed into law in 2015. Whereas, House Bill seventy eliminates local democratic control and strips power from elected school boards, boards which provide a democratic voice for parents and community members to influence decision-making regarding public education. And whereas, under House Bill seventy, school districts are subject to takeover based on their grades on state report cards. And whereas, the issuance of grades on state report cards is fundamentally flawed, and the components of the state report card system skew results in an unfavorable manner to urban districts. And whereas data is clear that state report cards directly correlate to the socioeconomic status of the students in the district, the median annual income on average for the school districts that will be taken over under House Bill seventy by 2020 is $25,717. And whereas the school districts that have already been taken over, or will be taken over by House Bill seventy by 2020, are predominantly comprised of minority students. Now, therefore be it resolved, that the Board of Education of the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District calls for the complete and immediate repeal of House Bill seventy and the enactment of House Bill one fifty-four, which restores local control and focuses on the improvement of student outcomes. This resolution is now up for your consideration and vote.
Do I have a motion to consider the resolution?
So moved.
Any discussion?
Oh, yeah. Okay, so, just looking at our, okay, so this is all based on test scores and the letter grades. So, just, just looking at our high school, the measure that threw us in Ed Choice was our graduation rate. So, when you look at the data, last year, we got a C, okay? And when you look at the CDs and Fs, those are seventeen percent of the school districts in Ohio. So, we are in the bottom seventeen percent of all school districts in Ohio when it comes to the letter grade. When you look at the reality, when you look at our state-approved graduation rate, we're above the state average, that's above fifty percent, if I can, if I know what the word "average" means. But, the test score, the letter grade marks us in the bottom seventeen percent. I mean, we know the report card letter grades are bogus, okay? An A is not an A across multiple districts, they're unfair. I mean, you can't take away the democratic process of a school district over flawed data, and the way that data is intentionally manipulated by the state. So, I, I think you probably know I'm going to vote yes for this, just saying. I'm done.
Any other discussion?
I'm just going to sit here and shake my head.
It's infuriating.
Yes.
It's very infuriating.
It is infuriating.
I mean, has it worked yet? I mean, okay, so they've, they've taken control of these school districts, so has it worked?
Well, no, that's the point.
Well-
If you look at what's happened in Youngstown and Lorain, nothing-
And East Cleveland, I mean, yeah, I mean-
East Cleveland's the newest, it's, it's a disaster. They're suffering from worse corruption, and there's no longer any way for the locally-elected members of the Board of Ed to have any say in what's going on with the education of those children who are their community, you know?
So, if we're doing a bad job, we can be voted out?
That's the point.
We can be voted out.
That's why we're, right, we're elected to do a job, and if we don't do it, then they replace us, that's the point, yeah. But not if you've got a state takeover.
And we are incredibly fortunate to have a community of citizens that see through it, and that continue to trust us with their tax dollars. And, and that they see what's really happening in the schools, and they understand that these measures are not accurate, and that it's measures like thirty-six scholars that are accurate, and that it's measures like our incredible arts program that are accurate, and it's measures like amazing students going to school together and learning from each other that are, that are accurate. We're incredibly fortunate to have this community that supports us, because they have the ability to see through it. But the truth is, the state is very, very careful in what information they endorse. You know, the state creates the report card that they want issued, and they use that, that report card as a, as a stick to beat us up with, and to funnel money into their anointed schools, their charter schools, their, their private schools, their religious schools. And, and in the process, they're also destroying communities outside of the public schools, because we know the Zillow Effect, you know, that we know that when, that when a local school is, receives a low letter grade, we know the impact that that has on housing values, which then trickles into the, the impact that that has on tax receipts for the local municipality. So, you know, and, and when you add into this mix, that which is undeniable, which is that it is low socioeconomic status, and it is people of color, neither of which are very well represented in the State House, in Columbus, I will add. So, you know, we have to, we have to have the courage to say these things out loud and, you know, say truth to people in power. So, this is another one of our attempts to do just that, I think, to, to say, speak truth to power on behalf of our kids and our community, and our host cities that are hurting because of this, this as well.
Well, and the part that infuriates me, as a businessperson, is I look at this, and I look at this inherently flawed system that says that the majority of schools in Ohio are failing, who would ever relocate a company here?
Right.
Why would you ever do that?
Absolutely.
I mean, I look at this and I go, what are you doing? You're, you're making your state less competitive, less attractive for investment because of this ridiculous system.
I think it's seventeen of eighteen inner-ring suburbs are receiving a D or an F- on the state report cards. So, the way, the thing I love to say about that is, imagine if that was the case at the Driver's License Bureau. Imagine if ninety percent of the people who walked in to take the driver's test were seriously in danger of not being able to drive, how long would they maintain that test? Clearly, it would go away overnight, and yet this is the absurdity that we continue to operate under.
I, I like the example of, you go to a restaurant and the health service has to give, give that rating of, that restaurant a rating, and a lot of other states and cities you'll see an A, and A, and an A, then occasionally you see a B, you don't go into the B establishment, you go in the A establishment. Well, last year in the state of Ohio, only five percent of school districts received an A in their overall score.
Right.
Five percent.
A rigged system.
So, how many people really want to attend our public schools because of that crazy number?
And the number of schools that are going into Ed Choice?
Doubled.
Is in, oh, it was up-
Doubled last year.
More than that, I think, the, I can't find my slide I have on it, but that was something I calculated for the presentation we gave at the Cleveland Heights Dems, and it was something like two-hundred-and-sixty-eight percent individual buildings, the increase of schools that went, of school buildings.
Oh, you don't go out?
None.
Once you're in, you basically can't go out, that's the problem.
Really difficult.
Well-
Because they keep changing the measures, so.
Well, they change the measure, and the criteria to get in is different than the criteria to get out.
Yes.
Right. Which, again, you know, how's that working so far? I mean, if the system's working, if the system is designed to identify the lowest-performing schools, that if they're genuinely lowest-performing schools, then wouldn't the system be designed to then, okay, here are the, here's the, the problem once, let's fix them. What do they need? And then theoretically, they would, the success of this measurement system would be to see them come out.
Well, and you also wouldn't use data that's seven and eight years old to determine what schools are going into Ed Choice.
Right.
I mean, think about it, the reason our high school is in Ed Choice is because they're using data from 2012, those students are now adults that are twenty-five years old.
Right.
It's ridiculous.
Well, and, and we also have to look at the, the test, I mean, people are going to say, well, you didn't pass the test, but, I mean, the tests are biased. I mean, one of the teachers that came and talked to us and spoke to us about the test, they, they talked about slope and how there could, they knew their kids in our school district understood the concept of slope. But when it came time for the Ohio State Test, it referred to it as, you're on a diamond-
Black diamond.
Doing this, this, and this, yeah, you're on a black diamond. Okay, I'm a skier, okay? And I understand what a black diamond is, it's, I still made no reference to the question, I didn't get that there were, I didn't understand that that's what was being asked. But realistically, I mean, how many minority kids understand what a black diamond is? Who wrote that test?
Right.
You know, someone that vacations out in Colorado and skis, I mean, that's not what we find in Ed, in-
Or someone who lives in a community that has a ski club.
Yeah, well-
You know, that, that a lot of kids can afford to participate in. And then there's the-
Well, we have a ski club.
No, I know we have a ski club, absolutely. I picked my son up many, many nights.
It's relatively small.
Yes, and it's, and it's not cheap.
No, it's not.
Then you got to rent equipment, I mean, no, I mean, yeah.
Right, we get, we have to rent a bus. But there's also the gap, I mean, Jim, describe the, the disadvantage, or, it's not, describe the, the gap qualification that some districts have and some districts don't, because of the makeup of their students, you've, I thought you've described this before.
I don't know the term, but it's, segments?
Gotcha.
Yeah, you did get me.
Basically, in order to, it's, it's not district to district, it depends on the makeup of your, of your population, as to whether or not the, you know, this incredibly important measure in terms of the district's overall score is, is whether or not there is a significant gap between-
Subcategories.
Subcategories.
So, we got a bunch of subcategories that we have to deal with, and other school districts may not have those subcategories, or they may be, you know, their, their subgroups may be different than ours.
Yes, so if you're a very diverse school district, you're penalized, if you're a very homogeneous school district, you're not penalized. All right.
Allison, are we doing okay?
She's so good at not answering.
It's always been a pleasure when you've given us these data things, and-
Yes.
So, I've had a motion, we've had a second.
You do.
We've had plenty of discussion. Mr. Gainer, will you call the roll?
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Serene?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Right, any correspondence and announcements?
Oh, I have a piece of new business.
Oh, well, you missed it, we passed it. No, go ahead.
I'll wait.
No, go ahead, new business.
So, um, we all know there's going to be a school levy on the ballot, we haven't voted on it, but I think we know that we need to either put a school levy on the ballot or not in 2020. So, I've reached out to some of the levy chairs, and I know individually, talking to you, you've reached out to some of the levy chairs. We've talked to some individually, some consultants, again, individually, about what it would take to run a campaign. We've talked about our marketing and what we've done. And in the past, there's been sort of a baseline survey that's been done on the, on the, every couple of years. And we haven't done one, and I'm guessing, in eight years or so, and this is something that the district usually funds, not to pass a school levy, but just to get a barometer from the, just to get a measurement from the school districts of how they're doing. So, it's not like levy questions, it's questions about the school district. It's public information, because we pay for it. I'm hopeful that we can have our communications department sort of dust off those surveys, I think TRI is the organization that has done them, and have a good look to see if it's something that we should engage again. You know, this had, you know, these have been done traditionally every couple of years, and it's just sort of a, sort of a third-party measurement to see how you're doing, how you're perceived. And we know there's a big difference between perception and reality, and I think it really helps us, as a Board, make decisions, I think it's helpful for our staff makes decisions. But I'm hopeful that you can have staff to sort of look into it, see if it's done before, and then make a determination if it should be done.
Yeah, it's a good barometer of what the community cares about and values, and where they think that we're doing good work, and where they think we can improve, if I remember right, from the previous surveys.
That would be helpful for our strategic planning process for 2025.
Oh, yeah, that would be perfect use of that data.
We are so deep inside the bubble.
Good idea.
You know, that I think it's incredibly important for us to do something like this. I will be interested, if it's been eight years, I'll be interested in, in how they, whoever we use, as we, maybe we'll talk to more than one, how you, you manage a sample in the age when nobody has home phones anymore.
Or you don't use home phone numbers.
Well, right, but, you know, you can't-
You've got to call cell phones.
Yeah, so, again, I just want to make sure that we're-
Or text them, because people don't answer their cell phones.
Yeah, you do a combination of calls, texting, web.
Well, yeah, you're right, we're in a bubble, we sort of know what we know, but we don't know what other people know, and although we get out in the community an awful lot.
Yes.
I mean, there's, there's groups that are out there that we don't understand. I mean, there's people out there that don't like us, and that's fine, I mean, because it's, it's a free world, okay? But, why don't they like us? Or do they not like us because they're misinformed? They have bad impressions of us?
And their taxes are supporting us, too, we owe it to them to, to, to try to understand what it is, so that we can better serve them. So, you're absolutely right.
And just roughly, what, I mean, what does that consultant feed?
Oh, I don't, I don't know.
I have no idea, that's part of what we would look into.
Probably if we dust something off that we've used before, and there's not as much, you know, time redeveloping something, if we can recycle much of one, that'll hopefully cut the costs. That's a good call, Jim, thank you for that, we should, that should be part of our cycle, really.
Just a regular reach out.
Yeah.
Okay, any correspondence and announcements?
A community member reached out to me with some interesting information about electric school buses, which we know are very expensive, but his thought was, they are used to generate electricity when they are not being driven. So, I assume that means you just stick panels on the roof or something, I have, I mean, there's a lot of research to be done yet, but I just found that intriguing, especially as we look into solar power on building rooftops and blah, 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 all these things, how do they connect, is there a way to take advantage of that as well? I don't know, so.
Well, I mean, it's a good point, I mean, we have this document we're looking at for our next retreat regarding all our facilities, and Bus Depot is high in that list. We know what motor cars did with that depot that has all the solar cells on it.
Right, the big canopy.
And it may not be ripe for us within our generation, or our timeframe, or with our funding limitations, or just all the other stuff we're doing, but if we're doing something with- but if we're doing something with facilities, they have to be around for 50 years. And so we need to plan, maybe not spend any extra money right now, but at least have this in the mindset for future, future school boards.
Mm-hmm.
So.
And there's been continuing correspondence from the group that's interested in solar. So I've had some back and forth with that group. I know they're interested in how they fit in with the BAC. That's something that Liz and I, I believe, are going to discuss at one of our bi-weekly meetings coming up. And they were interested in talking to Juliana Centuria about, um, would the Heights Schools Foundation be interested in or could give them ideas on whether or not it would be feasible to raise money? So I'm connecting them with Juliana as well to continue that discussion.
Great.
Okay, any other correspondence and announcements? If not, I'm going to move to the closing of the meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Gainer, will you call the roll?
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Serene?
Yes. We are adjourned, thank you.